This is the June 8, 2020, meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am giving notice of the fact that we held executive sessions on June 1, 2020, and June 3, 2020, to discuss issues of property and personnel. Moving to the consent agenda, are there any items that any Commissioner would like to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, are there any items that staff would like to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, are there any items that members of the public would like to pull from consent agenda? Hearing none, I will move for the vote on the consent agenda. I'll move to adopt the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Consent agenda passes unanimously. I'm sorry, I skipped public participation. Let's move back to item one, public participation.
This seems a little weird. Good evening, my name is Sarah Pillling, and I have lived at 29 Garrett Avenue for 38 years. I'd like to speak to Garrett Hill. In the past, Garrett Hill has been referred to as where the poor, using the N-word, lived. That was done by a Commissioner. Others have said, "You wouldn't want to live in Garrett Hill. I could find you a nice, much nicer house in a much nicer area." Or that's where the grass cutters and the people who keep the lawns live. And most recently, that the neighborhood is, parts of the neighborhood is so deteriorated that it should be condemned. I can't fight that. I live in a community of people who care for each other, no matter how it looks. So rather than argue it, I spent five days researching in the Delaware County Public Access Real Estate section. And I have sent to each of you, Mr. White and Mr. Rice, the database that I created, what the zoning was pre the Garrett Hill Coalition work, what it is now, the owner of record, their address, if it is not at that location. And you will see that there are only 12 owner-occupied houses on that street. We're down to seven student rentals. And in addition, those houses which have been fixed up or have changed hands since 2009, and the prices per Delaware County's records, they cannot be argued. My point is, you cannot select a very short section of that street to discuss what's going to happen to it, whether you're on the south side of the Piggan Whistle or the north side. We are a neighborhood, and it needs to be done in public. People have a choice. They have a computer, or they don't. They choose not to, or they can't afford it, or they don't see the difference. People don't have the Internet. Being on Facebook is a choice. Not everybody does it. I have friends who are very skilled on their computers. The last thing they want to be on is Facebook. I am. Why? I may be 83. I am because the night before my daughter died, she said goodbye to her friends. So of course I'm on Facebook. So any further discussion of Garrett Hill, the zoning, what's going to happen, needs to be done in public. And so I ask the Commissioners to please take that under consideration. Don't do it any other way. It's our neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening, Leslie Morgan, Ward One. I live in a 100-year-old house, walk to Wayne, actual walk to Wayne, not fake walk to Wayne. And I walk into Wayne every day. Probably did it twice today. But I'm here for two folds, very quickly, and staying under the five-minute rule, to talk about what's the ingenuity and spirit of the downtown of our community, which I've always called the heartbeat. Other people have followed that wording over the nine years I've been coming to these meetings. And, you know, some people are in this room that were a big part of that. Kenny Kearns is here with his music. If you haven't heard him, on his guitar, I encourage everybody who's listening on the TV and here tonight to go and take out some food and drink and listen to Kenny and his musicians. It's inspiring and hopeful, especially in a time when we want to bring people together, not apart. So grateful that he started that. And Chris, with his margarita pitchers and soup containers, and many other people, Paula and her great home-cooked food, and so many good foods. But one of the things I want to remind you is we go, start going into the financial impact of maybe what COVID did to even local communities like Radnor, is to remember that we're a town of mostly owner-operator businesses. And that's very different, their capital structure, than, you know, a town that's maybe like King of Prussia or the King of Prussia Town Center, where they have all these nationals. Their balance sheets can last a lot longer than the people in our town. And if we forget them, then what happened to Marty, maybe he was over-regulated, maybe he was just tired, they're not going to reopen. And we need to do everything we can to support them over any other thing. The school district will take care of the schools, but we need, as a township, on the township, your responsibility is our residential safety and the value of our houses. And nothing will increase the value of our houses right now than to showcase Wayne and how strong it can come back and be the coolest town on the main line, and maybe in Pennsylvania, and maybe on the East Coast. Because we have that chance. We have this small, little chance, because we have so many independent brands and owner-operators. And people are going to starve to be and walk to towns and get out of the cities. I can tell you that it's happening in South Florida right now. We see the fleeing from New York and how poorly it was managed, and the amazing sales rebound that's happening in South Florida, because people don't want to put up with poorly managed places. So I am asking you, in the future months, to start looking at your allocation and allocate it downtown, whatever they need, and do what I had suggested two and a half years ago with Matt Marshall. Look forward, not backwards. Let's go, if there's an empty storefront, let's go out to the nation and see what cool baby brands we can get in, so that we make ourselves even cooler. And get with your real estate professionals and say, "Can you help us?" And I think that'd be a great thing for Carfac to do, if it's even operational. The second thing I want to touch, Commissioner Larkin, is your resolution that you have farther down in the night. And I would just say this, free speech is the cornerstone of our country. End of story. You're never going to shut us up as Americans. You can try, you won't, okay? You notice that I have my mask, "Free America." I should have put "Free Speech America" as well. And it's really under attack again. And I think that if people are willing to debate with respect, Lisa, with respect, then we should not limit it. I will say that I've been here a little longer than you, and all those midnight nights, which I don't want either, I think it's ridiculous, were on zoning change issues. When you took Villanova, or Adrosin, or 145, and you made zoning changes, and people thought, like me, or other people, many other people, that there wasn't a good value exchange. Sure, there wasn't a good value exchange. You were just giving zoning changes. I mean, I had never seen it. I mean, Drexel didn't even do that, and that's a pretty liberal college. They demanded things in exchange. And we weren't doing that. And so people were frustrated, people who live near these big changes, and people like me who thought that was a poor deal-making structure in, on the dais. So I think that you don't have a lot of big ones coming up, and you're not going to have those midnight ones on that. So I think it's a little premature, or maybe post-mature, because we're already into almost the green phase of COVID. So maybe a few months ago, but you were all on Zoom. So I thank you for listening to me tonight. I hope you're all well, and your family is. And that's it.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Greg Pritchard, and some of you may know me from my work with the Radnor Historical Society, but I want to make it clear tonight that I am commenting only on my own behalf. The restarting of construction projects in our region over the last month is an encouraging sign that things are slowly getting back to normal. However, I have heard from many in the Radnor community who are dismayed to see that one of the first signs of progress was the destruction of one of Radnor's most historic properties. The Glenaze Estate on Cooper Town Road was one of the only properties in Radnor Township individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places, a distinction it had for more than 40 years. It was likely one of the oldest surviving mainline estates, as we think of them, dating back to 1859 in its oldest section, and originally home to the family that would build our Adrosin half a century later. While some think the distinction of being on the National Register also gives a historic property protection from demolition, it does not. Only local historic preservation ordinances can protect properties like Glenaze, but they can also do more. Creative preservation solutions can be found if certain use and relief incentives are made available to owners of these special properties. Other townships comparable to Radnor make solutions like these available to allow historic properties, many of which were built long before zoning or even the formation of the township government, the ability to modernize while leaving the character of the community intact. In 2003, Radnor Township adopted its most recent comprehensive plan, Section 7 of which is entitled "Historical and Archaeological Resources." Anyone reading this section, which is available on the township website, would get a sense of exasperation from the authors that the historic preservation recommendations from the 1988 comprehensive plan had not yet been acted upon. To be fair, progress has been made since 2003. Most importantly, the Harb was established shortly after. Yet, if there is a historic property or neighborhood outside of North Wayne, South Wayne, or Luella Court, it can be changed or demolished with the same ease as any other property in the township. Both the '88 and '03 plans included a list of the top 100 resources that the Township Appointed Committee deemed essential to protect. In the 17 years since that passed, sorry, in the 17 years that have passed since the '03 plan was adopted, three of those resources have been lost. Glenaze is now the fourth. Will there be a fifth? The next time you think about your favorite historic place in Radnor Township, a place that helps define this community and make Radnor Radnor, I hope you also think about how vulnerable it is. Thank you. I also have a letter from a high school senior on the same subject. He couldn't be here tonight. Could this be entered into the record?
So we don't normally enter written materials into the record, no. But you're certainly free to email copies of it to each of the Commissioners if you'd like to. You only have about two more minutes left, but if you want to read that, you're welcome to as well.
It might take a little longer than that, so I'll do that. And yeah, I wasn't sure if the meeting would be held in person or online, so he wasn't able to make arrangements to be here. But thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Deanna Doan. I'm the Vice President of the Wayne Business Association, and I'm here tonight to talk about the tent that has gone up on North Wayne Avenue that we are thrilled about. We've discussed it with the restaurants and merchants along North Wayne, and I've talked with Molly Gallagher, and Bill White, and Steve, and Superintendent Flanagan, all about this, and some of the details that needed to be worked out. And the WBA obviously is in great support of it. And we're going to provide $3,000 from the WBA to support the cost of it, because we understand it is costly to do this, and work with the township on some of the details that are in the press release that you should have received, I'm sure everybody will receive, and it'll go out to the public and all the merchants and businesses. And then also, we'll pay for all the signage and promotion for it. And if you were out in Wayne this weekend, you saw how already popular it is. You know, like Leslie mentioned, Kenny started kind of a movement of everybody getting out and socializing, and, you know, at their own, what they deem socially distant is appropriate. But, you know, we're really looking forward to offering the merchants included in this, the sidewalk easement, the easement on being able to put some things out on the sidewalks and promote sidewalk sales through the summer. And that gives the merchants an opportunity just to have, you know, additional sales and promote themselves basically for free along the avenue. You know, the only thing, you know, I think that some of the merchants were concerned about the parking, but, you know, once they heard of, you know, the amount of time, there really isn't a concern, and they're really just looking forward to this bringing business to Wayne. And, you know, the Wayne Business Association is just here to work with everyone, and we appreciate the support of all of you in doing this and the costs that it's involved. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Ken Kearns, 221 Walden Avenue. I'm also the owner of 180 North Restaurant on North Wayne Avenue. I have, I'm a resident of Township for 17 years, just about. I have four kids in the Radnor Township School District. I volunteer a lot of time on things like the Wayne Music Festival, the WBA. So I'm here in support on behalf of some of my restaurant colleagues of this proposed the tent that we have erected in the parking lot, which seemed to be the best way we could respond to the residents' interest and overwhelming desire to close North Wayne Avenue. The logistics that that caused, and some of the turf wars that we saw coming, some of the parking issues that we saw, we thought this was the best way to kind of give everybody a common area in the township. It also helped alleviate some issues we had related to insurance and liquor licensing and things that were somewhat gray areas. So the intent of this also, obviously, was to provide the residents with something that they've all been asking for, which is to reactivate the street. Obviously, during the lockdown, we did everything we could. As we go to these other phases, we started to just start ideas. It was somewhat organic. We just kind of set up in the window. We had an overwhelmingly positive and inspirational response of people stopping and thanking us, and giving the peace sign, and honking horns, and pulling over, and just kind of starting to set up. And we thought we were on to something, and figured out a way that we thought we could make it a lot better for everybody in the entire township, and give everybody a common area that we could all share collectively to have our customers have a place to dine while we're restricted to take out dining home. As a business owner, it's been an incredibly difficult environment, as we had, not only the restaurants, but all the different businesses. I'm also a landlord to some of the retail tenants on North Wayne Avenue, and, you know, I've asked for relief, and I've given relief, and we're trying to all work together to figure out the best way to survive this thing. But this idea came about as a way, I think, to collectively have everybody have one kind of shared space, treat it as a park. So, you know, I think we're trying to obviously generate support for this. I think it's something that's somewhat temporary. Obviously, we've toyed with the ideas of these First Fridays and all other things to really activate the town, but I think for the temporary nature of this thing, into these, as we go into a phase where we're limited to the seating we can have, I don't have any outdoor seating, so this would be my only option for my customers. And a music program that's managed in a very concise timeline between 5:30 and 7 o'clock, just to give, provide some entertainment and some life in the street, and nothing overbearing, was a great way to really kind of bring this place back to life. I've had way, way, way more, hundredfold more positive response than negative response. Negative responses around some of the things Deanna just mentioned, parking, obviously gathering, all these things that we've been trying to adjust along the way. We actually took a week off until we got to the yellow phase, formally, to do this again. We took, and, you know, it has a big impact on my business to take that week off, but we decided just to be the right corporate citizen here, neighbor, that we would do it the right way, and be responsive to people's feedback. That works its way into this tent, which, you know, nothing's permanent here. We're going to have to massage some of these programs as we go to make it better for everybody, and take real-time consideration of feedback that people are giving, be cognizant, obviously, that as we go into other phases, other retailers will be able to open. We wanted to encourage them to have some retail presence in an environment they're not allowed to, while we have people gathered in the street here. So trying to make it work for everybody, where every, you know, all these businesses that are struggling can have an avenue to get some customers back in front of them. I think it's a really good plan. I was really excited that people executed quickly on it. I think we're certainly open to making adjustments, and we're completely flexible in making things like, you know, specified by time periods, and number of people, and signage, and all these things that we need to adhere to. We're totally open to making that work. We're by no means trying to be the bull in the china shop. We want to do this right, and we want to do it for everybody. Thank you.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. Almost forgot, public comment tonight. Start the meeting, Mr. Larkin. It's okay. You'll eventually come around to how to actually run a meeting. Before I get into the focus of my topic tonight, which is this public comment resolution that was posted for the first time this morning, I want to fulfill a promise that I made at the last Board of Commissioners meeting that I attended in person. At that meeting, Commissioner Farley asked a very good question regarding the circumstances that led to the Township manager, former Township manager, and this Township parting ways. And I sought him out after the meeting, and I told him that I felt that I owed him an apology for an interaction that he and I had several years ago. For those not aware, there were some things that went back and forth on social media. And at the meeting, Commissioner Farley, during a break, came down, and he extended his hand to me and said, "Hey, Dan, I just want to..." And before he could even finish his sentence, I said, "Ababab, I don't want to hear from you. I don't care what you have to say. I think I already have what I need to know about you." That was a moment of weakness for me, and looking back, I didn't come across well in that interaction, because I was closed-minded to something that someone had to say. And I think, regrettably, that may have caused me to tune out Mr. Farley and others up on this board, just because I thought I knew before they spoke what their positions would be. That's wrong to have that type of a view. That's wrong to have that type of a philosophy. So, Mr. Farley, in fulfillment of my promise to you, I'm sorry for that interaction. I will endeavor to try to be better. But by the same token, I expect this board to treat public comment with respect. And this, which was posted today by Mr. Larkin, is the antithesis of that. You don't want to have less public comment in this charged environment. You don't. You want to have more interaction between this board and members of the public whenever possible, provided that it's being done in a way where people aren't abusing it. But when you read these whereas clauses, I don't know what meetings you've been watching. For example, whereas Radnor Township has for more than a decade maintained a policy of substantively unlimited public comment for purposes of greater transparency? What's that based on? Anybody can watch the meetings ever since Larkin became president, where he is constantly harping on five minutes, shutting down debate, prohibiting people from finishing their comments. And again, why this morning? Why this morning is this posted? You've known about the COVID reopening for a prolonged period of time. To bring this up now is ridiculous. It makes people question motivations, motivations from individuals who might not like public criticism. I get it, Mr. Larkin. You can be timid in certain respects. It's embarrassing if you're being criticized. Most people get over that by the third grade. They don't try to use legislation brought up, not at the 11th hour, but actually the day of a meeting, to try to squelch. That's not appropriate. On notice alone, this board should vote this down and say, "Mr. Larkin, if you want to put something on an agenda, you got to make that clear." Because up until today, it wasn't even a resolution. It was just Larkin talking during new board business about potential adaptations to the public policy, public participation policy. It's only this morning we know that there's going to be legislation? And when does this legislation end? There's no sunset clause. It's just that this board is going to revisit it after we get rid of red, yellow, green. Not when we hit green it terminates, but then we just have another discussion about it. Who thought this was a good idea? Who is so timid about public interactions? I get it again, Mr. Larkin. You're fearful, but that's not a reason to do it. I wish you'd be careful with your...
You have one minute, Mr. Sherry.
I wish you'd be careful with your public comments. I wish you'd prepare for meetings. I wish others up here would prepare more for meetings. But I don't think it makes sense to introduce legislation, trying to tell people to be quiet. You think that... I've tried this entire weekend, Mr. Larkin, to try to figure out what you were talking about, in terms of your resolution. I looked at Lisa Borowski's newsletter to see if that would have any information. You know what I read? I read that Mrs. Borowski is very upset about a death of a person that she calls Georgie Foster, not George Floyd. I wish people would take more care and try to actually take public business seriously. But I don't tell people to be quiet, and it was wrong for me to tell Mr. Farley, even during a break, to be quiet. Don't start this now. And if you're going to do this, and you're going to do it under the auspices of COVID reopening, make sure you have a sunset clause to say, "This policy stops as soon as we hit green." Not reevaluate, not have a discussion, not have anything like that. Sunset. Sunset at that time, even if you think you should do it, and I propose that you should not. The last thing I'll say about those midnight meetings, when's the last time we had a midnight meeting? Can anybody remember? I took a look on YouTube stuff. I haven't seen anything for a year that went to midnight. And even if it does go to midnight, so what? What are you, Cinderella? You going to turn into a pumpkin? You're either a timid mouse before 11:59, as well as after. We don't need to have this. Nobody forced you to become Commissioners. And if something requires a serious discussion...
Your time is up, Mr. Sherry.
After midnight, you can continue the meeting.
Mr. Sherry, your time is up.
But certainly, those meetings that drew on, as Ms. Borowski...
Mr. Sherry, please sit down.
...was not as a result of public participation going on.
Please sit down, Mr. Sherry. Your time is up.
Yeah, at least I didn't post this this morning.
Mr. Sherry, please sit down. Your time is up.
Mr. Larkin, give notice and be professional.
Mr. Sherry, sit down.
Jack, kindly do not berate.
No, Rich. We're not doing that.
And this is exactly the point that I made to you as well.
Rich, this is public comment.
It was inappropriate to put this on the agenda today, and before this...
This is public comment, Rich.
So this is inappropriate.
Rich, calm down.
Mr. Sherry, exactly correct.
Calm down, Rich. This is public comment, Rich.
You're wrong, not anyone else.
Rich, this is public comment. Is there any additional public comment?
Hi. My name is Sandy Karati. I live at 307 South Wayne Avenue, but I'm here tonight as Chair of the Wayne Presbyterian Church Township Relations Committee. The church has been a centering entity in downtown Wayne since 1870. Not only is it historic buildings, the spiritual life of many in Radnor, but it's a support to the community. In addition to many standard church functions, such as Sunday services, weddings, and funerals, Wayne Presbyterian is open for Boy Scout meetings, weekly programs for the senior center, blood drives, AA meetings, grief counseling, various clubs, Wayne Oratorio, interface hospitality, food drives, et cetera. Also, we support Music Transforms, which is a music lessons for children in southwest Philadelphia. Our mission is to serve, and we're happy to be there for the Radnor community and beyond. But I'd like to take this time to offer comment on several issues before the board. It's come to my attention that there was an idea floated that the Commissioners would give free parking for the business community in Wayne. And I'm not sure if everyone knows, but most of the North Wayne parking lot is owned by Wayne Presbyterian Church, not the township. So each and every evening, we give free parking to all of the business owners, each and every business owner there, because there's no parking fee charged in the evening. So we're already giving free parking. So even during the day, the parking fee of 50 cents an hour is implemented. The church only receives 50% of parking revenue from our land, and none of the parking ticket revenue. This is held by the township. We empathize with the business community. But we also have not been allowed to gather, and this has hurt our financial standing. The church needs the minimal revenue that we do receive to support all the programs that I mentioned earlier. And does it really make sense to take away violin lessons for a child in southwest Philadelphia to reduce the parking costs for a highly-paid individual in center-city Philadelphia? There is no social justice in that, and I'm sure the individual, if they knew who they were hurting, would not want to take away the $2. In regards to the tent, even though we're the largest single real estate parcel in the town, we were not brought into the decision-making process. the town, we were not brought into the decision-making process. We have very specific questions as to the length of time it'll be in service, hours of operation, cleanliness, COVID transmission prevention measures, trash removal as to not draw rats. After-hours loitering, will people be allowed to walk through the tent to get to the church? Or will they be forced onto the uneven sidewalks on either side? Can anyone eat and drink from outside, or do things need to be purchased from the North Wayne businesses? So we have a lot of concerns. Fortunately, I talked to Bob today, and I think perhaps there's more dialogue. But in the future, we would hope that these decisions that are being made for North Wayne incorporate the church, which is the largest parcel of real estate in that, and that the commissioner and the various business people within the township would contact us. We're very easy to get a hold of. So I want to thank you. We look forward to an equitable solution. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I think that we have a short presentation. Bill.
Is this on? Good. If you'll forgive me for the next couple of minutes, I'll take this off. We wanted to recognize someone here tonight that this may be their last Board of Commissioner meeting with the township, someone who's been with us for the last nine-plus years, who has—let's be honest, she's kept us all on the rails. She's kept us organized. She's kept us communicating. She's done a fantastic job in good times, in tough times. She's a rock. She's always professional. She's always honest, and she will always be missed. So we would like to recognize Jennifer DiStefano. I can't shake your hand or hug you, but I will.
No, thank you.
That was a very sweet surprise.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Elbow bumps.
Elbow bumps and waves.
So I don't want to embarrass—oh. I don't want to embarrass Jennifer, but everything that Bill said is true. When I first started in this position and I was—I was in the president's role, I had absolutely no clue of what I was doing. And Jennifer kept me organized, kept—let me know when things needed to be done, and really helped me in the—in the beginning and throughout the entire time. So I want to thank you, Jennifer. You've done an incredibly amazing job, and Radnor is going to miss you. So don't go too far. You're going to Florida, right? Jealous of that tan. But thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
Moving on to Item 3A, announcement of various board and commission vacancies. Commissioner Borowski.
Definitely not used to being in public anymore. We have two vacancies on—do we still have two vacancies on Carfac? I thought Carfac was totally full.
Two, yeah.
We still have two vacancies?
Yeah.
Okay, so two vacancies on our Carfac, one vacancy on the Citizens Communication Council, one vacancy on the Code Appeals Board, which requires a master electrician, plumber, or general contractor, one vacancy on the Design Review Board, one on the Environmental Advisory Board, two vacancies on our Hard Board, one on Parks and Rec, one on the Planning Commission, and we have one vacancy—one alternate vacancy on the zoning hearing board, and then one vacancy to fill out another term. So if anyone is interested in those positions, our committees are—and boards are very important to the operation of the township. We would ask that you consider it, consider getting involved, and send your resume and letter of interest to our township manager, Mr. White. Thank you.
Moving on to Item 3B, ordinance number 2020-10, adoption, approving a three-year lease for the Philadelphia Area Independent School Business Officers Association, PISBOA, for a portion of the Radnor Township Municipal Building consisting of approximately 2730 square feet. I will so move. Is there a second?
One second.
Bill, do you want to tell us about this?
Yeah, just real quickly. We introduced this at the first meeting in May and stepped through some of the details at that time. PISBOA has been a tenant in this building for a number of years now. They continue to be a fantastic tenant. They work well with us, and—so their current agreement is set to expire on—what? Expire June 1. So this would be a replacement lease agreement for three more years with the rental. All things being the same in terms of the rental agreement with the different—the only change being a freeze in the rent for the first year and then some slight increases in years two and three. The income that we generate from this agreement is in the ballpark of $76,000-$77,000 per year. And again, they are—they are a fantastic tenant, and we enjoy having them here.
Is there any commissioner comment? Is there any further staff comment? Is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item 3C, ordinance number 2020-09, adoption, amending Article 1, Chapter 62 of the Radnor Township Code incorporating a defined contribution plan for civilian employees. Bill, sorry, I will so move. Is there a second? Bill, will you lead us through this?
Absolutely. This was another ordinance that was initially introduced at the first meeting in May and then advertised for tonight's discussion and adoption or consideration. The ultimate goal of this is to provide those township employees with some sort of retirement option. Since 2013, any new civilian employee hired does not receive any—any kind of pension. That was bargained with the rate folks and then carried forward—or yeah, carried forward for the non-union civilian folks. And what we have found in recent years is that without being able to offer any kind of retirement, it has become increasingly more difficult to hire folks and retain that talent for a long term. Across Pennsylvania and most of the country, for generations, governments offered defined benefit pension programs. The—the market situation from 2008 and '09 brought to light many of the underfunding or the funding challenges that those pension programs present. It was that that caused the township to suspend the defined benefit program for those civilian employees. So what—what is being proposed here is more in line with what all of our neighbors offer their employees and all the municipal governments around us offer their employees, and is also similar to a 401K-type of program that you would see in the private sector where there's a—an employee contribution and a township match. The state recognizes this as a pension program and therefore will provide the township the unit value per employee that participates, which will defray—in all likelihood, defray all of the township's share of—the pension on the aggregate. So this isn't an expense item that we anticipate having a negative impact to the township's budget, but at the same time, it'll benefit those employees who are able to participate. Mr. Tate can go through any—any more details, but again, the—the goal here is to have this program, which will allow us to offer to potential new hires going forward on the civilian side.
Is there any commissioner comment?
I have comment. So I'm a huge supporter of our Public Works and our civilian folks, Steve McNellis and the guys that work in Public Works. I know they watch these meetings and say hello to them, and I know—it'll let them—I want them to know that I'm—I'm their major supporter, and I appreciate everything they do and—and the trash and—the trees and—the work that goes on, so really where the rubber hits the road for the township to most of our constituents. And I understand the impetus for this benefit to be offered. I'm—I'm not supportive of putting it in place now because of the COVID-19 disaster that we have as far as our budget, as far as the effects of other people, the destruction of our economy, and the huge amount of political and economic unrest that—we face. This is something that we should negotiate at the next—when the contract runs out. We should not put this in place right now. We should put it in place when a negotiation comes, and—and that would be the appropriate time. To do this now, I feel, is the wrong time. So despite my—my support for the folks and the new folks since 2013 that this is aimed at, I'm not supportive of doing it right now, and—and that's the rationale.
Any additional commissioner comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All against, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five to one. Moving on to Item 3D, ordinance number 2020-11, introduction, amending the township zoning ordinance to provide setbacks for residential emergency generators and to provide regulations therefore. This is an ordinance that was proposed initially by Commissioner Enderly. Since he's unable to be here tonight, I'm going to move to table. Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
I'm in favor with one provision. I would like this whole ordinance to be brought before the Community Development Subcommittee so we could look at this and get—and solicit input from various affected households and other community and public input, and so we can put together something that is more cohesive and more—that fits in better and is more interlaced with our ordinance so that we have this input before it goes to planning. And so I'd request that we put this in a—in a—in a meeting for the community development.
Okay. Well, procedurally, the motion is tabled. Rich, since I think you're still in charge of community development, that's absolutely a meeting that you can hold. Moving on to Item 3E, Resolution Number 2020-60, authorizing the installation of sanitary sewer at the 400 block of Lancaster Avenue via the Developers Agreement of Emerson Development in the amount of $90,485.20. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is Mr. Norrisini back in the room?
Yes, sir.
There he is. I assume this is you.
Yes, sir. So when the Emerson Development came before us for land development, there is some deteriorated sewer on the north side of Lancaster Avenue. Mr. Emerson and his development firm agreed to replace that. Although it's not a requirement, they did agree to do that for the township. The township's portion would be to cross Route 30, so he was addressing things on the north side of 30. The township agreed to replace our line, which was our responsibility that crosses 30. So as their development has been ready to move along, in speaking to their contractor, they offered to perform that work for the township. So I contacted the solicitor, who said that could be done. We would address it through the development agreement. And the total of that work is $90,485, which basically includes crossing Lancaster Avenue with a sanitary sewer, select backfill, installing a manhole on our existing line, and then repaving roughly a 50-foot swath of Lancaster Avenue, which you'll notice right now, it says "Do not pave" because we don't want the guys that are paving to pave over it, so we rip it out. So there is a benefit to the township to do this in that we would not pay prevailing wage rates. We would not pay for the bond. The bonding is addressed in the development agreement. The work would take—can take place immediately if it so pleases this board. So there is a cost and time savings to the township.
Is there any commissioner comment?
A question on the funding source. Does this come from the sanitary sewer fund or from the general fund?
The O2 Sewer Fund, Commissioner. And there are funds in there to cover this work.
So this is an unbudgeted item, and it won't affect the budget?
It's coming from the remaining—the few remaining dollars we have from the 2018 sewer improvement notes. So this'll—this'll basically take care of the rest of those funds. So unplanned, yes, but budget and cash is available for the project.
Well, we had notes, and then weren't they refinanced with a bond? So it's—that's—it's not left over from the notes. It was part of the refinanced amounts.
Yeah, it's—
Or is it left over?
They're refinanced into the bond, but the—the accounting and the tracking of the dollars from the original note still has to be maintained. And so those are accounted for separate of the rest of the bonds that were part of the 2019. So yes, the note was refinanced in with the 19 bonds, but still accounted for separately.
So basically, that was the short-term money. So it's old money versus the refund—refinance, which was all put back into the—to refurbish the general fund, and this piece wasn't.
This piece wasn't, no. It's—it's—it's always accounted for within the sewer fund, so it's—it's the same money at just a lower interest rate.
Any additional commissioner comment? Any additional staff comment? Any public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item 3F, Resolution Number 2020-61, establishing guidelines and policies for outdoor sales of food and merchandise of existing businesses in Radnor Township during the coronavirus pandemic. Bill?
Sure, I'll—I'll tee this up, and I would ask Colby if you could jump in on any areas that—anything material that I missed. So under this discussion item, we have the resolution, and then after—after we consider the resolution, I would like to talk about the tent and go through a full discussion and presentation on that. Specific to the resolution, this was born out of some of the discussions we had on Zoom with regard to what the township could do to help businesses that have been stifled for the last three months. And what came out of the discussions was this resolution that Solicitor Rice drafted for us that will suspend the enforcement of certain zoning regulations as it pertains to outdoor dining and retail, provided certain conditions exist. The primary—the primary condition that we've attached to the resolution is the guidance from the state on how restaurants need to operate outdoor dining during the yellow phase with regard to the number of seats, the distancing, the cleaning, and the like. Then the other element to this or condition is that those restaurants that own their own parking have to still meet the requirement to be able to park their customers, which shouldn't be—we don't anticipate that being a significant issue since the number of outdoor seats is at—is capped at 50% of what they otherwise could get, and the store is still empty. So the parking, we don't anticipate being a big issue. We—we're still—we put in here another condition that if—if the sidewalk is being used, that 48 inches clear space is still required, which is the current zoning requirement now, to make sure that the—the sidewalk itself is—is safe to—for the walkers and the travelers. And what we're asking those merchants that do—so there's two different categories of restaurants, those that already have an outdoor dining permit and those that don't. For those that do already have the outdoor dining permit, they are allowed and presumably since Friday have been offering outdoor dining. presumably since Friday have been offering outdoor dining at whatever capacity the regulations stipulate. For those that don't currently have the permit, we're offering a, a more streamlined opportunity during this emergency phase for them to gain permission from the township to move forward with outdoor dining. They would have to submit a form to our Community Development Department who will review and sign off on its receipt. We want to stress that this resolution has a very finite period of time. It is through, it is set to expire on October 31st, 2020, unless modified further by the Board of Commissioners. So that could be sooner or later at the Board's discretion. So that's a long explanation of the township trying to do, to work within the guidelines we can to help those businesses start to reopen and start to generate sales again. Did I miss anything material?
You did not.
Okay.
Okay, well, I will so move. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. With respect to this, I think there's probably going to be somewhat of a divide on the board between commissioners who are excited to see everybody start to reopen and just want to kind of move forward, and commissioners who feel the same way, I'm sure, but are a little concerned about the mosh pit that we had there over the weekend. And I totally understand those concerns. One of the things that I think is really important is that we work with the businesses to basically colonize the outdoor spaces in such a way that you're unable to have people in the tent with their camping chairs just kind of hanging out in a big mob. What we want to do is we want to create safe spaces which are defined in such a way that you know where you're supposed to sit and you know where you're not supposed to sit in order to give people space. Similarly, on the sidewalk, give people the opportunity to expand the tables that they have for their restaurants. That means that you end up creating spaces where you can't have pedestrians just kind of standing around drinking a beer outside, eating whatever food it is that they've ordered. So I think that we can help the businesses while simultaneously controlling some of the mob that I know that people are concerned about. The alternative is we just keep doing what we did this weekend. We cannot tell people, you're no longer permitted to have outdoor dining. We don't have that authority. The governor has opened us up. I don't think that we're going to tell people that they have to shut down the outdoor dining that they've already been given. I don't think that we could under the circumstances, which means that we either have to start policing the pedestrians, which the governor has pretty clearly said that he doesn't want enforcement on an individual level of these rules. So I don't really know what enforcement would look like there. Or we have to come up with a system that defines the space in such a way that it is actually better usable by everyone. So I'm obviously going to support this. I'm going to ask everybody else to. With that, is there any additional commissioner comment?
I haven't heard the governor say that we shouldn't enforce. That was an unusual comment, so I'd like to hear that elaborated on. And could you go through with, for the benefit of the public, how you anticipate that this works with the tent? The tent, I got some complaints that we had, the tent was, wasn't for business, it was only for protesters, but it seems like this is part of the outdoor plan. Can you talk about how it's part of the outdoor plan, how it integrates with the outdoor plan, and how it integrates with those who currently have outdoor dining as part of the service offering?
Can we keep the two items separate? I mean, we're, Rich, we're voting on this and the tent is a whole separate issue. The tent's not involved in this.
Okay, so the tent's not involved with this. You mentioned the tent. That's what I thought too, the tent wasn't involved with this, but we mentioned the tent.
They're two sep, they're, they're two separate issues. They're linked in their goal, but they are two separate issues. And we can get into all of those.
Well, that's my question. To the extent that the tent is linked, could you explain how it's linked and how you envision the link occurring?
I'd be happy to if, if this is the appropriate time. Do we want to?
I mean, yeah, sure.
Okay. So well, first of all, the tent had nothing to do with the protest. So there's, there's no link there. As I communicated with the board on Thursday, my, my regret, my only regret so far is that it went up Thursday. It, that was a little bit of ready, shoot, aim in our haste to try to get the ball rolling at the same time or in conjunction with the governor's transition to yellow. And it, I would rather be sitting here without the tent having been there all weekend. So I do regret that and I apologize for that. The tent is intended, well, its location and its intention is to help those restaurants in the North Wayne area because as, as we're aware, space is limited. Public space is limited and therefore outdoor dining space is limited. And that's the only onsite sales that restaurants are allowed to do under the yellow face. So the tent is meant to provide the opportunity for the customers to order carryout, a takeout order from any one of the restaurants in North Wayne, go and pick it up and then go to the tent and enjoy it in Wayne. And then at the same time, having some additional foot traffic in the neighborhood to help with the retailers who are allowed to open in a limited capacity under yellow. So the, the entire goal is to, to get folks back into Wayne to help, again, restart that section of the township, the business in that, that portion of the town. There are a lot of details that have gone, that, that will be going on with the tent with regard to the distancing of the tables, the cleaning, the monitoring that we have, that we'll have in place, the hours, the, and then all of that being flexible based on what actually occurs. If it does turn out to be a mob scene and it's uncontrolled and ends up looking a lot like the peaceful march that we saw Thursday, or what we've seen in a lot of the bigger cities across the country where folks just, they're, they're not practicing social distancing and all of the, the guidelines that we've, we've heard from the federal and state levels of government. We can scale it back. We can take tables out, or we could ultimately, you know, close it down. But the idea and the goal is, again, to generate business in that area. If I, I mean, I've got all the bullet points for the hours. A lot of it's changed since last week as we've worked in partnership with the WBA. And I can go into those now, or we can jump back to that after the resolution's considered. Either way.
Well, it's fine to jump back. I mean, I just wanted to get a sense of what, how it related to this that we're considering.
Yes. Oh, there is an important point that I missed and I apologize. It's critically important, is that the location in North Wayne benefits those restaurants because, again, spacing is an issue. The, the resolution and the, their ability to have outdoor dining, it expands township-wide. So restaurants throughout Radnor would be able to take advantage of the resolution if adopted. They don't have, in most cases, they don't have the same space restrictions that exist in Wayne. They own their own parking onsite, or there is parking linked to their restaurant site already that gives them the ability to take advantage of it and set some tables up in those areas for the outdoor dining piece. The, the restaurants in North Wayne don't have that same luxury. The only parking we really have is the, the public parking and the space that was identified with the, where the tent ended up going up.
So with respect to the tent, many of these restaurants in Wayne have, already have outdoor dining. And presumably, they wouldn't need to have this other location that's, that's not near their restaurant for takeout. Or do they need that too? And does everyone share it equally?
Well, the, the situation that they're facing is that if, even if they have outdoor dining currently, they're only allowed to have 50% of what is approved. So I don't know the exact number of tables, but I, given the space, it's not many. And then cut that in half is what they're allowed to have now. And then all the, the dining inside the store is still shut down. So this, this offers a replacement or expanded outdoor dining to help replace sales that they're not getting by having in, dining inside their store.
Understood, but some stores don't have outdoor, so there's no benefit or there's no priority for them. It's, it's share and share alike whether you have outdoor or not.
Correct. You, the, the residents can choose whatever restaurant is offering takeout and get the food from there and then go eat.
What were the issues with the mosh pit? I didn't, I didn't hear about the mosh pit in Wayne. Presumably, there's, it was spilling out into the, into the street and people, very crowded.
Well, yeah, to be perfectly, yeah, to be perfectly frank, I mean, that is one of the concerns is, and for those folks that, that are still concerned about the virus itself and its spread and that, that, that is definitely something to consider. What we're trying to do is weigh between, or give the folks that don't have the same level of concern, the opportunity to go out and have dinner. But if, again, if, if there is a mosh pit type environment, or if people linger there all day, or if a party of four turns into a party of 16, and then those are things that we're going to have to manage as we go along. And at least at the outset, we're, we'll hope that we'll get, that folks will be respectful to what's being offered here and that, and that this really does help the businesses. And we're hoping that folks will, will enjoy their dinner and then move along and respect those that are concerned about the virus and they, they take care of themselves. They take care of keeping masks on when they're walking around or, you know, throwing away their garbage when they're done and not congregating. But if that does not happen, we always have the ability to, to amend this as we go forward.
So I looked at the Exhibit A and there's really an extensive list of requirements for the restaurants to maintain. One of them that you talked about, if, no more than 10 unless it's from the same family. And so presumably, if, if a group of four does turn into a group of 16, that would be prohibited and that would require the police to break it up, I guess, or the restaurant owner. And, and please, again, I'm 100% supportive of this and I want, I want us to, to, to implement this. But we have people that I've gotten calls from and, and some of my colleagues, that we don't enforce what the rules are. So is that one of, I mean, are we really in a position to enforce these rules or did we just say, we're not going to enforce them?
Yes. So our position throughout the entire pandemic response is that this was, these are the governor's rules. They're, they were put forth by his office and that enforcement of them throughout this entire pandemic have been difficult for any municipal police department or codes department or any department to enforce. With, with two exceptions. The assets that we control were the areas that we had the greatest amount of decision-making and discussion and confrontation on, to be perfectly clear, or frank, with our park and trail system, and then with, with the tent. So being that the tent is something controlled by the township, the enforcement of what goes on there will fall on us and it's something that we will have to, to stay on top of.
What, what does that mean, stay on top of?
Well, we're proposing to have an officer on, onsite or in the area, the entire business area, to keep, keep an eye on crowd control and to intervene when necessary.
I'm also, go ahead.
Just a moment. So I guess the question of that is, are you going to actually enforce it? Or are, if we see it repeatedly violated, will we just shut down the whole arrangement?
The ideal situation would be enforcing it as we go. If it is a constant, if it's a constant problem, then ultimately we could get to shutting it down. I don't know if we'd want to go from opening it up to shutting it down without some steps in between. Because again, keep, keep in mind the goal is to try to, to help the businesses out. And so that, I would hope we would have a couple steps in between.
So I, I'd just like to ask, so it is a pretty extensive list that you have here. Will there be signage? Will there be, you know, what, how do you guys plan on communicating this? I mean, it would seem to me, I mean, I wasn't there, so I don't know, but an open tent is definitely more inviting for just kind of a mass group of people. But if we do, you know, fit it out with tables and things like that and there, you know, these rules are in place and they're clearly communicated to everybody, you know, I think in this moment people are being, you know, respectful and, you know, doing their hardest. And I guess I'd want to know, also is the WBA, will you guys be helping? I mean, you're not the police, but will, you know, you guys be helping? Like if you guys just start to see it come out of control, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, if you see it start to get, you know, kind of out of control, will you seek some assistance? Is it all right if I ask? Do you guys mind if I just ask?
Well, Kenny will be on the street though. I mean, obviously-
I'm sorry, Deanna, you have to come.
I have to wait.
Okay. Sorry. Is it, is it all right if they answer?
Why don't we just hold public comment until afterwards? And remember that question, Kenny, don't go anywhere.
Okay, all right. Because, you know, it, it is an extensive list. And again, you know, there definitely is the concern. And I did hear from some people as well, you know, from the weekend. But it would seem to me that if we can take it and fit it out and it's clearly delineated, you know, where you can sit and where you can't, and we've got these rules, like you people can't share a table, no more than so many people at a table. What is it, six, I think? You know, I say we at least give it a go and see if people can, you know, control themselves and, and be respectful of each other, which is what we're asking everybody to do everywhere in this moment.
I, I had some concerns when I first heard about this proposal. I am going to support it. I do want to see all of our businesses start to become more healthy. What I am glad about is the change in the hours. I felt it was really important. The original proposal had been till 2:00 in the morning when, when bars closed. So to me, it was turning it from a dining space to a party tent. So I'm grateful to see those hours changed. I think they're reasonable dining hours and that's what we're trying to do. So thank you for making those changes and I really hope this works. And I don't want us to be, you know, coming in and being really harsh with enforcement, but I do think, you know, we have to take it seriously because if a few people ruin it for the rest of us, it's going to, you know, it's going to disappoint a lot of people. So I just, I'm really hopeful that the restaurants and the township together can just really encourage people to treat it respectfully. And like I said, I really hope it works. I hope it helps.
Bill, I, I want to continue on Rich's question. So on, on the issue of enforcement, why if we're trying to help out the business district and there's many reasons to do so, why does it seem like we're more inclined to enforce if there's 12 people at a table than if there's 25 kids at Memorial Field setting up volleyball nets? They have drinks, lawn chairs. I mean, and it was early on in the pandemic and that was allowed to continue. But so why are we saying we're going to enforce this under the tent?
Well, in all likelihood, there will be 25 people under the tent at any given time. So it, what we're, what we're enforcing here is not the congregating, the gathering, the, the being on top of each other. The, the sports field situation, as we saw it, was something very different. There are kids out, running around. We had specific guidance from the state saying that getting out and recreating was something that was healthy and important during the pandemic. And after, I mean, at the end of the day, they were, they were kids playing soccer on a soccer field. I, we did, the volleyball net was there for three days. Those, those folks, that, that was a little bit of a problem, but it, they went away. They didn't come back. So yeah, I mean, it, it's a tough situation. We, yeah, we could have gone and enforced Memorial Field more strictly. As it turns out, hopefully there were a lot of kids that were able to play and, and enjoy themselves a little bit. So I, I understand the question. I see the dichotomy. And that's just, that's, that's where we're at with it.
My, my point is, you know, I, I don't really like being up here, passing resolutions to have policies under it and not having it enforced. And that's what we saw with- And that's what we saw with the parks and trails, and I feel that, you know, that it's going to be the same case here. So if we're not going to enforce it, let's just say there's going to be some leniency.
Well, in all likelihood, there probably will be some leniency, because again, we're not going to go check IDs to make sure they're family members when they're standing around. I mean, there's, I think our intervention, and I'll let the police, I'll let Chris go into a little bit more detail, because ultimately, it'll be his department, but if you've got, the term mosh pit came up earlier, if it's that, then it's very clearly a problem. If it's just that there's every seat under the tent is full, and everyone's just eating, then we don't have a problem, although it looks like there's a lot of people. So there is going to be discretion, and that's part of the risk of giving this a try.
It's also worth pointing out, I think that it's a whole lot easier to police the restaurants than it is to police every single person in every park in the township. If one particular restaurant ends up being a bad actor, and I don't anticipate that any of them will, but if there's one restaurant who were able to say, it's everybody who you are bringing in, and they will not, your advertising is such that you are creating an event that we just can't have going on, because the people that you are bringing in will not social distance, then we have a lot of enforcement mechanisms. We can take away their outdoor dining permit, we can, I don't know what our liquor license options would be there, but I imagine that there's something. We just, we have a lot of mechanisms for restaurants in a way that we don't, when you're talking about policing absolutely everybody everywhere in the township. So whether or not we should be policing the parks differently is one question. I don't, I'm not really competent to get into that myself, but I can certainly tell you that we will be able to police restaurants a whole lot more easily.
Well, and to that point, Commissioner, it wasn't every park, it was one field.
Okay. There, I mean, I guarantee you, the trail, I know that field, Cowan Park, there were a lot of parks where people were not really doing the right thing, which I think we have to acknowledge, which is unfortunate, but.
In support of that, even the governor was out walking with the protesters and admitted that he wasn't following his own rules. So I think that there's really selective enforcement from the governor, let alone what we do to try to help and to facilitate businesses opening up.
Commissioners, Mr. White put a team approach to the COVID-19. As you guys are aware, our emergency management team, who helped create the social distancing and the setup in here, the great support of the Public Works team, reference to the tent, to Commissioner Abel's point, that very specific area and area in Wayne, we plan to have extra police, a dedicated officer who is up there. The officers of emergency management, Molly, our PIO, and the WBA are working hand in hand as a partnership. It's a living and breathing thing, we have not done it before, so there will be a couple bumps in the road. But between the three groups, the police department, their report writing, the support of the codes department, and Kevin Kachansky, we'll be briefing the managers, he can keep you aware. There'll be a couple ups and downs as we go through it. We've measured out the tent. Our health officer has taken a look at the spacing for the tables, so we believe we're in compliance. We've worked with Mr. Rice and his team on a couple of issues where there were challenges, where it's not 100% clear in the legal briefs under the Emergency Services Act, where the authority comes for this state of emergency designated by the governor and enforcement. There's been some challenges we have, that we actually sent two incidents to the Pennsylvania State Police for clarity, since they have direct access to the governor's office or his team, that's unfortunate. So we will be there, we are going to attempt to work it out. I think we realize that there's many different views, very important views, everybody has. I would like to acknowledge Commissioner Abel for never giving up on the safety of Memorial Field. Sorry, I appreciate it. We were able to split up some groups in a very nice and gentle way to ensure the safety of the children playing on the field, and some sports heads who may be taking advantage of our beautiful turf field. In reference to the tent, we'll take the same approach, slow, steady, calculated, and documented. So that is our initial plan. I think the good thing about a temporary tent is we can close it down as quickly as we put it up.
So I was going to call for a sense of the board on the tent once we got to new business, but we've been talking about the tent for a while now with respect to this issue, and they are really side by side. So maybe we should, like, just power through with respect to the tent, and then we can take two votes, one with respect to the specific resolution, then a sense of the board with respect to the tent. So if there's any more questions on either, let me hear them now.
Yep. So Bill, I just have a question on number four under the resolution. So if a merchant proposes to use spaces in a township or private parking lot, what is the merchant using those spaces for?
Presumably, that's where they'd put their tables for the outdoor dining.
So would those tables be on North Wayne Avenue?
No, see, that's where the tent, that's why the tent was helpful for North Wayne, because they really, they have a very limited sidewalk space if they want to take advantage of this. So the tent helps them there. You might have a different restaurant that owns the restaurant and the surrounding parking, where they could take a few of those parking spaces away and set up tables there.
Okay. So we're talking about Lancaster Avenue now, for example?
Lancaster, there's one or two restaurants in Garrett Hill, there are some on Radnor Chester.
So on Lancaster, take Lancaster Avenue, for example, if they, if a restaurant takes spots in front of their business, but there's also retail in front of their business, how does that impact the retail shop?
So if it's Lancaster where there's public parking along the road, they have the same restrictions as those on North Wayne Avenue. So they won't be able, I mean, to the extent they can have a table or two, comply with the regulations, and still provide 48 inches of walking space along the sidewalk, they can do it. They can't take up the whole sidewalk and force people into the parking, nor can they go into the park, the public parking, for obvious reasons, because of the car traffic. So in their situation, they're going to have, they'll be situated like the restaurants on North Wayne.
Okay. And earlier, early on in this discussion, we talked about closing off North Wayne Avenue. Is that an option anymore?
It's an option. In our discussions with the Wayne Business Association, it's more palatable for their organization as an event-based closure, more than, versus a long-term, permanent closure. So the answer, I think, is very much yes, so long as we have an event, it's event-driven, be it a sidewalk sale or some event, most of which isn't really on the radar now because of the restrictions that we're under. But as we start moving towards green and being able to have those discussions, we actually, when we talked last time, we said, now's the time to start talking about those events and get the ball rolling with them. So that's a long way of answering.
Okay. And my last comment is, I did take a few calls over the weekend from people who were upset that you had removed the chairs and tables from the tent. And, you know, I actually appreciate you doing that. I appreciate that they brought it before the board, before you set it up. You know, that's the type of stuff that we were seeing under the previous administration, where it was easier to ask for forgiveness after the fact. And, you know, I like that you decided it was more important to come to us, get our approval, and then go forth. So I appreciate you doing that.
Next time, I'll do it one step better.
Thanks. So I looked here, and I don't see where it says the hours of operation. So were they changed? Where is it in this resolution?
The specific resolution, that deals with restaurants township-wide. Their outdoor dining will be limited to what is in the code, which I believe ends at 10:00 PM. So they have it until 10:00 PM, and that exists now. So if you have an outdoor dining permit, you can offer that till 10:00 PM now. That'll be the case if the resolution, regardless of the resolution passes or not. If it doesn't pass, then only those who have a permit will be able to do it.
Sean, I just want to say, I saw it in a press release that was sent by Molly as we were sitting in the room, that was referred to by one of the speakers, that the hours were in that press release. That's why I got the information.
It shouldn't be in a press release. It should be in the ordinance, too. So that's one of the issues, because I think it's important that it's all in one place, so we have somewhere to go and not have to fumble through, well, there's something here in this document, and there's somewhere something else. So this needs to get updated with everything on it.
Well, I think we're mixing the two issues. We're mixing the outdoor dining and the relaxation of the enforcement to allow greater outdoor dining township-wide versus the tent. The tent is where the hours of operation was adjusted. The initial proposal had it to 2:00 AM to match when the restaurants had to close or the bars had to close. That was ratcheted back to be 10:00 PM to be consistent with the outdoor dining law as it exists now.
So who was the one that initially brought that out?
Which piece?
The 2:00 AM.
Well, that was the initial proposal with the tent operation.
Who proposed it?
Our team did, as we were preparing the plan for the tent.
Okay. So I guess, so you'll be allowed to walk across the public road with a beer in your hand to the tent? Am I correct?
Yeah, the governor passed legislation allowing for takeout alcohol. So.
Takeout alcohol, so there's no more open container? Or is that just temporarily ceased, or is there just no more open container?
The restaurants received a particular guideline that has to be sealed. I could spend a lot of time talking on it. As long as it follows, as long as it follows the governor's code, they are welcome to walk across the street with it and utilize it in the tent. That's our concept, unless changed. So that answers your question, Commissioner. But to answer people's question, like, you couldn't get, like, some type of mixed drink with a glass and two straws, stand in it and stroll across the street, that would be in violation of the governor's order.
So basically, you need to put a lid on it, I'm sure. Okay.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure with that. The other issue that I have, and I'll speak for Garrett Hill, and I spoke to Angie Mitchell, who owns both the Brew, pardon me, both the Owl House and Flippin' Bally's, who owns both the Owl House and Flippin' Bally's. And basically, there's not going to be any sidewalk dining there. So everything is going to be pushed up above, because I know that there are a lot of residents' concerns. As of now, it doesn't look like she's going to have anything at the Owl House. It would strictly be probably no more than four tables at Flippin' Bally's. So that's, I just want to put some of the people, their fears at ease, because I don't think it's going to be overly rowdy. The other question, I guess I have, and I think we need to address it, is the whole Wayne Presbyterian Church, did you get permission from them to, I mean, if they own that land, did you get permission to put the tent there?
Yes, we have a, we have a land lease with them, where, that gives the township permission to operate that particular section of the lot. There were several conversations had today, opportunities to address all those questions and get them answered. A lot of the details of this, even up until the start of the meeting tonight, are still in flux. But we do appreciate their partnership and.
Sure. Because instead of, if you don't park in front of a store, that area is obviously the most sought after, because you would walk right through that little egress into, you know, the center of the strip there. So I don't know if that materially hurts their, you know, their operating.
Well, I don't want to speak for the church. I think that the bigger issue here is that the parking has been free since the beginning of the pandemic. That was one of the decisions made to help people out in that area. This isn't probably the best environment to negotiate, but part of our proposal was going to be to reach out and help the church out, understanding that the revenue share is down. But we're just not there yet. We don't know what the number looks like. We don't know how long we'll be in this situation. We don't know how long parking will be free. Those decisions are still in flux and being determined.
Okay. And then one more thing, one more comment I want to bring, and I appreciate that, Bill, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but.
No, please.
You know, the last thing you want to do is just fix one problem to cause another problem, and thank you for addressing that. I appreciate that. Yeah, so just the one last thing, I don't know if I said it, I've said it a bunch of times, I'll say just one last thing, and I want to end on this. If this sun sets in October, this will materially hurt Garrett Hill Restaurants, because they will have to go back to only having indoor. Now, I know it's October, you're not going to have much outdoor dining after, you know, in the beginning of November, but I think it is important that we look at and we stay proactive on having some kind of resolution to have limited outdoor dining in Garrett Hill. So I do want to end on that. Thank you.
Is there any additional, Commissioner, comment?
Mr. President, just one last comment, and it was mentioned earlier, and I did receive an email today referencing the tent, right outside the tent, uneven sidewalks. Can we just make sure that if there is uneven sidewalks, and I think it was referencing the Whitekirt Realty side of the tent, that proper security measures are put in place, either a cone, barricade? You know, we wouldn't want somebody stepping out of the tent and falling right off.
Absolutely agree.
Going once, going twice? Okay, is there any additional staff comment? Is there any public comment? You guys have at least one question to answer.
Okay. Deanna Downe, Vice President, Wayne Business Association. We will have, we'll work with Bill and with Molly to have proper signage, so people understand what they should be doing, and basically being neighborly and not taking it up all night, not making it into a mosh pit or a, you know, drunk fest. I think, you know, the time limit at 10:00 really, you know, helps that. I think, you know, Ken can speak to, like, his music stops at a certain point, and the dining stops as well. And another good thing to remember about this is it will help some merchants, like, let's say Kids &amp; Cribs can have, you know, an art class, or Christine Shirley, or Color Mine. It is, those tables are available and they're open, like a park would be open. So it's not just the restaurants this is benefiting, but like, because it's open early in the day, other stores can benefit, or say, like, elegance, and people can go get their coffee and go sit, like a book club could in the community. So we're hoping, and this is, remember, this is only for a month. This is not an extended period of time, you know. So, and like Ms. Rice said, if it doesn't work, we have the, you know, the luxury of taking it down. But we will disseminate a lot of information through our own social media, our email, through local blogs, like Savvy Mainline, Mainline Neighbors. We'll make sure everybody knows all the details, so that when people do come to Wayne to enjoy it, they'll understand, you know, let's everybody be neighborly and treat it properly. One of the other things is we'll have big no smoking signs up, because I understand over the weekend, a lot of people were standing there smoking, and there was a lot of cigarette butts. So that'll, hopefully, we'll be able to control that a little bit. But as to policing, no, I think that's really up to, you know, Lieutenant Flanagan and his group, but we'll just kind of keep the word out, like, everybody be nice and treat it properly, otherwise, we won't be able to have nice things like this. So do I answer your question? But, yeah, we're paying for all the signage, too. So we'll do all that, we'll design all that, we'll make sure that it's up there, and, you know, whatever signage we need for, like, the sidewalks, we'll take care of getting that produced. And we have A-frames, we have posters, we can do it all. So, okay?
Look, I know this is tricky, a lot of this is tricky. The enforcement piece is the trickiest part. We're all trying to do a lot of creative things here and be innovative to get some much-needed help to the restaurants. We're all really struggling, but if you think takeout business is enough to run your operation, it's not even remotely close to hiring, you know, covering the salary of one person. 50% capacity doesn't work either, so just understand what we're trying to deal with here, to keep the lights on, and so that when this thing does go to October in a different phase, there's someone still left there standing in the surf field. Like, we're literally in that situation. It's that desperate. The tent's tricky. Look, I get not everybody's going to be for it, there's going to be issues that come up in enforcement, you know, different than on a beach, how do you enforce a beach? Do you count the collective people, or is it 25 people out on the beach in a march? This is all new to all of us, it's really hard to navigate. I really appreciate innovation and the creativity and the response we've gotten from the township in trying to figure out and try things. And again, we're fully open to adjusting as we go. It was not a mosh pit, by the way, it was the fact that the tables that were set up in the tent on Thursday, we took them down because we didn't have the formal approval here, which we needed, which, again, just made a larger open area that more people could assemble. It happened to rain on Friday. It happened to rain on Friday. The Philadelphia Inquirer was here and did a really nice photo shoot, nine pictures in Sunday's paper about how creative we were in getting our town back to life, which is really inspiring, showing people set up, set up in their, you know, lawn chairs just because that's all we had at that point. Trying, we, we, we have all the, you know, when we're out there doing our hour and a half thing to try to get people into town, we're announcing as we go, please be respectful. We have signs up to say, if, if you're coming close and you're getting food, please put a mask on, respect others' privacy. It's really hard. We all know that. The march is really hard. I don't know who's, how you could possibly enforce all those rules, including, you know, it happened all over the world. So we're all trying to be innovative here and creative and trying to keep the lights on. I'm reiterating that the restaurants, you know, there's a couple that might not make it already that I know of. You know, we're all scratching and clawing to keep things alive so that we can keep the great town there, and that's a really important piece, which is not just about the restaurants. This was the best, I think, idea for us all to kind of use a common space that we could all share. That's not limited to North Wayne Restaurants. That's, you know, anyone coming to town is a picnic area. So we're trying to be like back to town for a lot of people. And, you know, I appreciate everybody's input. We're open to input. By no means lock the stone on hours and spacing and all those other things. We're just trying to, you know, keep the ball moving there. Thank you.
Again, talking for the church, I think it's going to really come down to the rules and regulations of this tent. It is now an outside pub, basically. People are bringing their drinks across. What's to stop it from being a BYOB? Which is fine. I mean, that's up to the township, but you have to respect the, the church, that the parishioners are parking on North Wayne Avenue and going to the entrance in the rear. They're walking through the party tent to get there. And, you know, it's an outside venue, so people are, will drop a drink and it's not like being inside a restaurant. And so I think it's important that part of the, the rules are that there's a trash pickup Saturday night, that the, the tent is washed down Saturday night so that, you know, the people that own the land are getting to their property, you know, in a, in a cleanly way. I mean, what's to prevent a family of, you know, with several kids walking through that, sitting down on a bench? And if you're still worried about COVID, you know, picking up COVID. I mean, you know, it's really, I, I know that the township is trying to work it out. And I, I just think that you should be respectful of people that are worshiping on Sunday, you know, based on what's going on on Saturday night. So just putting in my two cents.
Hi, Dan Sherry, briefly. The word mosh pit came up. That was used by Mr. Larkin tonight. Just had a member of the audience deny that a mosh pit was ever there and we see our township manager, I guess grappling with that particular term. Since it doesn't seem like a mosh pit was there, I'm very curious why the president of this board would use that type of word to describe what happened over the past weekend. The vice president, Mrs. Borowski, admitted she didn't witness anything but heard that it was relatively respectful. So what is it? I'm hearing things about mosh pit and mob. Is that what's going on? Or do we have actually a fairly large, albeit respectful gathering? Because goodness, if we're going to be doing legislation about this, we really should be operating from the same series of facts. Certainly sounds like this is a challenging situation, and I don't think it's appropriate for the president of the board to be using words like mosh pit if that in fact did not occur. For those not aware, a mosh pit is a chaotic scene when people are slamming into each other, usually with heavy metal being played in the background. If that's not in fact what occurred, then why would the president be saying that? Why would he be stating something that is not accurate? More importantly, why isn't anybody correcting him on that and say, well, Mr. Larkin, whatever your position may be, that's not an appropriate representation of what occurred here recently. Don't take up legislation if you're not operating from the same series of facts. And because the public, if this resolution goes forward that Mr. Larkin has apparently concocted about public participation, will have less of an opportunity to correct Mr. Larkin, the responsibility lays on all of you to do that. Speak up. Say, well, where did you get that? Okay, were there arrests? Were there people that were talking about that? And then you can get to the more problematic and substantive issue of how do we balance these issues here with the nice people who want to go and pray on Sunday morning versus the people who want to go out and socialize on Saturday night? Operate from the same series of facts, please. Thanks.
Is there anything in addition?
So, Mr. White, can I just ask the question that was asked by the representative from the church? Will there be, will we be able to, or maybe have trash pickup on Saturday night or early mornings, like early Sunday morning or something like that?
So as part of this, a sanitation firm is being retained to, to be on site. So the site will remain tended to during hours of operation, not just from a garbage standpoint, but also a sanitation from the COVID perspective. So the site itself will stay cleaned up. Public work, there, there'll be a dumpster there. Public Works will, will clean that out. So yes, those concerns have been addressed.
Thank you.
Sorry.
One other item.
Rich, just something. I just have one more follow-up. So you said that this could be a BYOB situation. Is it possible for someone to come with a cooler and get a table? Not saying that's ideal, but maybe frowned upon, but do they have to, I mean, could they set up a picnic instead of saying it's a BYOB?
Yeah.
Could they bring a picnic lunch there?
Yeah. We don't want to advertise it as a BYOB because again, we're trying to help the businesses out. Having said that, if, if, you know, a mom and a family come and, you know, they buy drinks for themselves and bring drinks for the kids, I mean, that's, that's where the, that's where we're just going to have to figure it out as we go.
So you're not required to purchase something from one of those restaurants to eat there?
No, it required's a tough word.
I, I know it is. Is there anything you could do to kind of say like, hey, this is for?
Well, it's for the businesses. It's to generate sales for our restaurants. So hopefully people will.
Would there be signage kind of stating that this is specifically to help the businesses while we appreciate you?
Yeah, and that, that'll be part of the, the communication campaign that goes out is making it clear.
It's kind of tough for me to imagine someone bringing a picnic lunch to sit in the parking lot. We've got tents, or rather, we've got parks all over the place.
You'll, you'll wind up having six people come and then a family comes that doesn't want to, you'll see, it'll happen.
Got six out of seven, though.
I, I would just recommend somebody also look at and have a position on whether there's any imputed income. It sounds like this is a benefit the township is giving to the businesses. So you should establish, if you, if you don't think there's any imputed income, that there's a position so that we don't end up with that issue coming out as a gift, either a gift or income in kind to the businesses. So just, just something for you to consider, Bob and, and Bill, and recommend you get to decide on it one way or the other.
Okay, I will call the vote on the resolution. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Resolution passes unanimously. Bill, do you feel like you have what you need from us with respect to the tent?
I believe I do. The one thing I'll conclude with is Molly has been nice enough to, to volunteer as our picnic Grove Point person. So any questions, concerns, she's, she's leading that charge from all fronts. So as the superintendent pointed out earlier, it is a team approach. We've all had, had our hand in these discussions, but she's going to take the lead going forward.
Moving on to item 3G, approval of tap trail easement agreements. Is this Steve, you?
Thank you, Commissioner Larkin. So we, the township has provided the school district with the plans. We've satisfied their engineer's comments. So we are asking the Board of Commissioners here to approve the tap trail easements and then we can move forward to presenting them at the school board meeting for their approval, their acceptance of the easements.
Okay, I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Steve, is, how does this affect specifically the Lenore intersection that we've talked about a lot, if at all?
This has no impact on Lenore intersection, Commissioner.
Sounds good to me. Is there any additional Commissioner comment?
I just have one quick comment on the agreement with the school district. Mr. Anderson, I think it's item F around the signage. So is that signage, is that trail related signage or is that any signage that the school district wants? I see later on it refers to trail signage. What is that?
I, I believe it's both. It's, it's for whatever signage may go up. So we, we've incorporated all their, all their requests into the agreement. So it's for signage that we may put up, signage that they may put up in that existing school sign, you know, out at the corner.
So is that school sign impacted by the trail?
We are, we work around it.
Okay.
In the beginning, that's, entry is just north of that sign and there's protection around there. And then once the trail, once that section's completed, but that's actually noted in the agreement.
Okay. So would that signage be if we damaged the signage or?
Correct, yes.
Okay, it's not just we want a new sign, you need to give us a new sign. It's more of if there's damage to the.
There were specific, there was a couple items that had to be done to that sign as part of this, and that's what is noted in there as well as protection of the sign.
Okay.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to reports of standing committees of the board. Do we have any reports? Hearing none, I will move on to new business. Jake, outdoor movie night.
Yep, thank you. This is a continuation of a discussion we had a few meetings back where we talked about holding an event on North Wayne, in, in the North Wayne area, you know, location still to be determined, but talking about the idea of, of hosting drive-in movies. And at that time, the majority of the board was reluctant to do such an event out of concern for public safety. The pandemic was still early on in the, in, in the period and we didn't know what the long-term impacts would be with, with gathering or how people would gather. But as we've seen over the last couple of weeks, we've had hundreds, if not more than a thousand people march on North Wayne and Lancaster Avenue. We're hosting a tent now. I think it's time that we look at doing other things in the township. And I, I think it's, you know, I've heard from a number of people who support the idea of holding drive-in movies. They think it's a new idea, it's a fresh idea, and they'll gain a lot of support. So I would like to see it happen and just want to bring this back before the board and get a sense of the board.
I'd obviously support it. It was my suggestion. Well, I brought it up to the board. It was not my suggestion originally.
No, I, I had already said as long as we're not, you know, in the red phase, which I think at that time it was illegal. In fact, I heard they were doing, some township, some township was doing drive-in movies and they were getting cited because it was illegal when it was red. So as long as we're in a phase where it's not illegal to do it, go for it. Who gets to pick the movie? I've already had two people send in requests.
So my concern is going to be that if they do take out alcohol from, from one of those restaurants and they have their key in the ignition and they're drinking, chief, does that qualify as operating a motor vehicle?
I know, well, the answer is yes. If, if you are a driver and you become over the limit or you are intoxicated to the point you can't safely operate in the motor vehicle code that dictates that you would be under the influence.
But how about if you have an open container in your car with the key in the ignition, you're technically still operating a motor vehicle even though you're not driving within open container? Would that qualify for DUI?
You have to be over the limit where you have to be unable to safely operate.
Being, being in control of the vehicle, to answer your question, would have the keys and the ability to move the car. I think one of the things, and I, I know that there was some discussion, we got, we got caught up on location and whether it was North Wayne Avenue. I think if we, if we're able to build out where we can have it now that the state home order is not in place, then we can start building it out. If we do something in the North Wayne area, wherever the commissioner wants to put it, and I know Tammy spent a lot of time on this, that we would, we could come up with a couple ways. We would work around it. We could spend a lot of time talking about it, but we would, we would come up with some safety initiatives or a pledge or make sure nobody was doing it if that's the will of the board in compliance with the standards. So there's a lot of opportunities and by moving it to another location or another parking lot where you can't walk or whatever, there's a lot of things we could do to make it happen. So just let us know what direction you want to go in. And I know Tammy's teed up to, to run with it and we're good to go. The Officer of Emergency Management, the Police Department, Public Works will support it.
Do you see any safety issues with this? Chief? With the alcohol or the, as head of the emergency management team, do you see any safety issues?
If we're correlating it to vehicles, then there has to be some type of pledge or a monitoring of, of the drivers if it's on township property or something like that. You're getting me way into the weeds not knowing the total concept, but I, I know there's been a lot of discussions that, you know, where we could have a funnel point where you can't drink in that area if we do a special night for the night. So there, there's a lot of things that we can make happen to make sure it's safe.
Okay. So the, the other issue that I have, and this is not a knock on Tammy or Jack or Jake or everyone that has really tried to champion this, is that it would cost the township, and I know they probably split it with the Wayne Business Association, maybe $2,000, okay? So if it costs $2,000 and you have 100 cars, you're expecting at least someone to order at least $20 worth of food for you to cover. But I mean, if you look at it on the mercantile side, for us, it's definitely going to be a loser. How much revenue would we need to bring in to cover the cost of the, the $2,000, of the $2,000?
Commissioner, if I may? I'm sorry, the intent wasn't to cover the cost of what, the, the direct costs of the actual event would be by the money that's generated, you know, for anyone who would come and participate and patron those businesses.
And, and I get that and I respect that, but I think we're going to be dealing with a really, really tight budget. So I want to see these businesses thrive in Wayne. I mean, I'll probably support it, but I think we need to realize that this is going to be money that we're helping the businesses, that's fine, but it's, it's just that, that will, at the end of the day, it's basically making a donation for that cause.
And I, I understand Sean's question. It's, it's actually a very good comment. And I think we need to think about those because this is probably not going to be the only idea that we have over the next several months to help out the Wayne Business District. And something I brought forth to Bob, or to, to Bill and to Jack, is that we could look at auctioning off parking spots potentially to raise money and to use those funds to pay for these types of events. So I, I, I like the question, I appreciate the question, and we have to think about it in those terms and think about are there ways outside of just paying out of the, the general fund to raise funds that we can then put back into the Wayne Business District?
I just don't want to see us just chasing a ghost to try to fix the problem. Let's look at ways that are going to be sustainable. You know, if it needs a shot in the arm, absolutely give it a shot in the arm. But going forward, we can't just start throwing money toward a problem when I don't necessarily know it's a, these knee jerk reactions, I don't necessarily know if that's going to really get to the goal where we want to be long-term. And that's just, thank you, that's just hitting my concern. Thanks, Jake.
I would only question again, like the timing. So I had, when it was originally proposed, I think as Commissioner Borowski noted, we were in the red, so it didn't seem like the timing was right. I like the idea of it replacing some things that we have been, have gotten really used to, parades and festivals and things like that, that even, I think people won't be comfortable doing. So this would be an alternative to have maybe a series or something going into. doing, so this would be an alternative to have maybe a series or something going into when we think it's kind of the safe phase to do it. I guess I now question with having the tent, and doing a drive-in, and enforcement, and all of those issues that we were talking about around the tent, kind of how would we, and I will leave that to the team to look into, but I would ask you to really consider, how do we manage a night like that? You know, we are asking people to come into, with their cars, we're asking them to buy food and alcohol and other beverages, and, you know, see their community members, and then we're offering them an open space to gather as well. So, I would just say, in the planning, please keep that in mind, that we're trying, I don't think we're at the phase where we want street fairs yet. So, the tent plus the drive-in together really need to be thought through and coordinated, but I've liked this idea since the beginning, and I just am cautious about the timing, and now the coordination with other, with other ideas.
Moving on to item 5B, resolution number 2020-63, a resolution of Radnor Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, adopting a policy with respect to public comment requested by Commissioner Larkin. So, I'm going to say two different things. The first is, we have, I don't know, 12, 13 chairs in the room for members of the public right now, and in order to fit the people in the room that we had at the beginning of this meeting, we had to ask some of our staff heads to leave, which we're not always going to be able to do, for whatever reason, because we've got something on the agenda that they need to speak about, because they just want to see the meeting, whatever it's going to be. We're not always going to be able to ask staff to leave to make room for the public, and there's going to come a time when we have too many people to fit in this room. What that means is that there are people who are not going to be able to participate in this meeting, who really should be able to, and we need to find a mechanism in order to accommodate everybody. The goal here is not to prevent people from commenting. The goal is to ensure that everybody gets a chance to comment. And I'm perfectly open to hearing from other people, and how they think we can best do that, while abiding by the guidelines that we have to, and while keeping meetings as short as we can, because none of us, including members of the public, need to, should be, or want to be here, exposing ourselves to risk of coronavirus infection, or frankly, anything else. I've gotten really, I like that I'm able to breathe through both of my nostrils for the past three months, not having colds constantly from my two-year-old is phenomenal. I'd love to keep that up. So, fundamentally, I'd like to find a way to address public comment in person without having everybody in the room, because we don't get to do that anymore. That being said, this is an issue that needs to be dealt with by all seven commissioners. We can't do it when we only have six. Unfortunately, Damian isn't able to be here tonight, so I'm going to move to table. Is there a second?
Second.
I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion to table passes unanimously. Jake, I know that you had an additional public item, I think, on the post office.
I do, so it's not on the agenda, and I apologize for that. This came, I believe this meeting occurred after the, the agenda was, excuse me, after the planning commission met, and this agenda item was discussed. But at the last planning commission meeting, there was a proposal before the board to redevelop the old post office, and as part of that proposal, well, that proposal outlined 17,000 square feet in office space. Now, the developer asked for two variants, one being on parking spots. According to our code, they would need approximately 68 parking spots for the 17,000 square feet, and they're also asking for a waiver on office space being on the first floor. I would ask my colleagues to support sending the solicitor to the zoning hearing board meeting, which meets next, which meets on the 18th, and it's important that we have this, take this action tonight, because the zoning hearing board meets before we meet as a board again. So, send the solicitor to oppose both, both requests. On the parking spots, you know, the plan...
Second.
On the parking spots, the plan outlines 14 spots on-site, and they would be looking for approximately 54, 54 parking spots from the township or elsewhere. And, you know, there's other options that the, that the developer has. They can downsize the square footage, they could, well, they could, yeah, they could downsize the square footage, which would require less parking spots on-site. And I don't think we should be in, I don't think we should get into, set the precedent that we're giving away township parking spots. In the South Lot, I believe there's 54 spots. We've already given 11 to the library. We're going to lose a few more after the South Wayne Lot construction project, and, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I think that has a long-term effect when other developers come into the township and are looking for places that their, that their customers would park. So, I don't believe we should be in the business of giving away township parking spots in the South Lot, or any lot for that matter. On the issue of office space on the, office space on the first floor, again, I would like support in opposing that. There's other options that the developer has. They could look at mixed use, part office space, part family dwellings on the second floor, and there is, despite the discussion last, at the last planning meeting, there is retail in that area. So, retail can, can exist and can survive. So, that's, that's my request, just to get support from the board, to send the solicitor to the zoning hearing board on the 18th.
Again, second.
So, I just don't know enough about what's going on here to really talk intelligently about it, so I'm probably not going to. But fundamentally, based on what you've said, I have a lot of the same concerns that you do. I know that we have a lot of plans for that South parking lot. We talk a lot about how people should be able to walk from there to the businesses. I'm not sure that's going to really be a problem with the post office, just because the post office closes before we get to really the heavy usage hours of the parking lot for many of the businesses in North Wayne. But nevertheless, I would certainly support sending the solicitor, and before the solicitor goes, I would be interested in seeing maybe just a one-page memo on everything that's happening with this, bringing us all up to date.
You know, I'll support this. I spoke with one of the planning commission members who shared this information with me, and I guess my first thought was, do we really need another office building? But, you know, I would be concerned about an office building, people coming and parking and utilizing the spaces all day, when, you know, the library needs their spaces, you know, people do come and go to the post office, and a lot of times, it is difficult to find a spot there. So, I would, I would support sending the solicitor.
I'm all for them building office, whatever they want, but they just need to provide for their own parking, not rely on the township. So, I'm all for, let's send the solicitor, and I think the planning commission pushed back on, on the developer as well, so we should join with them, and take it up at a later date, when they're, when they're prepared to actually provide adequate parking for their development, and I'm happy to support it.
That's fine. That's a good idea.
I have one more item after that, for new business item, just quick.
Then I would like to just address something as well. But, yeah, no, it's always better to be safe than sorry. That's why we have a solicitor, so we don't lose control, so.
And also remember, they didn't come to us, they went straight to the planning and go into the zoning hearing board, so this is the only, this is the right time to talk about it, because we haven't had an opportunity prior to this.
I also agree, and I, I think it would be helpful to have the solicitor there, so to understand the project better.
Okay, that's decided. Thank you, Jake. Rich, and then Sean.
I just wanted to have the board consider opening up, I, two requests for tennis. We should be able to open up tennis, indoor tennis on King Precious Road, as well as our tennis courts. And we could have tennis, and everybody can mark their balls and play with their own marked balls, but they should be able to play tennis. I'd ask we open tennis in the township.
So, I believe, Bill, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but the tennis courts at Warren Philippone are open.
Yeah, those were just reopened last week.
Last week.
I believe, when we transitioned to yellow. So, yeah, the tennis courts, yeah, tennis courts are open. To mark your balls.
All of them in the township?
The outdoor.
The public ones.
The outdoor tennis, right?
Outdoor tennis that the township controls.
Yeah, nothing indoors open yet.
Yeah, indoor recreation, according to the governor, is still restricted. But the courts that the township manages are open.
They're all outdoor.
Yes, we do not own or operate any indoor.
Just two points, and first, it goes out to the chief and to your staff. I'm shocked that this hasn't been addressed, but I think it's important to say, I took part with my family in that walk, that march, and there are a lot of people, there's people that are angry, they have a right to be, and I just want to say that, chief, that the staff and your police handled it extremely professional, and it says a lot about you, what you do, your leadership, and I really, really, really want to thank you, and please express that. It's a very divided time right now, but when you need to say something good, I think we should be allowed to say something good, and I just want to thank you for your leadership and that of your staff, so thank you for that.
And I'll join in. I was very pleased that we had a very prominent police presence and participation, and including vehicles and the helicopter, and I know it went well, and I think that the police being on top of this, and having our co-police forces in Tredifern, as well as the county staff, all could have made the difference to make sure that nothing went awry, and that that presence was very well-received and really appropriate, so I appreciate that being in place.
And one more thing, and I'd love it, Bill, if you can kind of touch on this. These partitions right here, they save the township how much money? Tell, can you just tell the people at home about Public Works? Because this is ingenuity, this is, and I've always said it, I hate the idea of ever having to think about outsourcing our Public Works, and if you want to talk about these partitions right here, that's the exact reason why, so please.
Yeah, as the Office of Emergency Management worked towards reopening the building for public meetings, they solicited quotes from several different vendors to come in and install partitions. I think the lowest cost that we got was close to $25,000. Our initial reaction, obviously, was, that's way too much, and then thanks to the Public Works guys and their willingness, it probably wasn't their most exciting project they've done, but they came in and they whipped this up for a couple thousand dollars, so they ended up saving the township close to $20,000, $22,000 by doing this.
I said 15, so I'll have to amend my post. Thank them, and thank Stephen, of course, because it's an amazing job.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, and, and, obviously, we're off agenda, but I think the last couple of months have really allowed the public and all of us to see our different departments in a, in a new light, in a very positive light. I think they've all stepped up. Public Works, with the yard waste and the storms that hit us last week, were just unbelievable, and they didn't miss a beat. That'll probably take them a couple weeks to catch up, but we know that they won't miss a beat, and they'll, they'll keep doing what they need to do. The police department showed their professionalism in dealing with everything they've dealt with, not just last week, which was obviously immense, but throughout this whole, this whole pandemic, in dealing with the very, very minor issues to very, very major issues, and they've dealt with them all in a very professional way. And our codes department, recreation, and the virtual offerings that they immediately shifted to, and those have been a wild success, and Tammy's getting ready to roll out, they've announced that they're going to do, they're going to have two different offerings for day camp, they're going to have an in-park one and a virtual one. So, it's been, it's been awesome to watch everybody step up, step up their game during this. Just amazing time with everything that we've been dealing with.
Thank you all. You all have been doing an incredible job, and under extremely adverse and challenging conditions on a daily basis, so thank you all.
Do we have any other old business? Hearing none, time for the final public participation. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will move to adjourn. Is there a second?
So, second.
Some moved.
Hearing none. If you want. You've got a page yourself.